No action will be taken this evening. Wayne Ballmer, who is the interim general plan consultant, will provide discussion on development of the Prescott Valley General Plan 2035, update and review materials related to the project. Wayne, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. As was mentioned, my name is Wayne Ballmer. I've been asked to lend a hand with Eric Fitzer leaving to get your general plan to the voters in the fall, and to do that, we need to work together to get it completed into that process. So this afternoon, I'd like to give you an update on where we stand, get input from you as far as what you think of where we're going now, and set some direction for the future. So with that, I'm going to use the little clicker here. Just to add away a background, every city and town in Arizona needs to have a general plan. The state requires that, and we have to update them every 10 years. So Queen Creek, where I was working previously, we did this process and it took two years. We don't have that much time. So Prescott Valley needs to get their plan to the voters in 2022, so next year. So we're on a compressed timeframe to do this. And in order to do that, the state has developed a process, how you adopt a general plan. There are steps that we all have to go through, and some of those we'll be talking about this afternoon. This is the schedule that Eric showed you last summer, as far as getting this whole process underway. You approved the public participation plan, the council approved it, and talked about we would be preparing the plan and it would come to you in two parts. First part is tonight, October 11th, you have nine chapters, and we'll be talking about them briefly in a bit. And then in November, you will get the balance of the chapters in the plan. The plan right now has 12 chapters, and the mayor wanted to add two more, one on education, one on public safety. So there will be 14 in your new general plan. So we want to review those with you. At the last time we spoke, the chairman had talked about the need for a joint meeting with the council. That tentatively has been scheduled now for November 4th at the council's study session on that day. So we'll be getting it to you. The idea is you will have a completed draft. We'll take your comments on this one that you have, plus those we get from the council and anyone else. We will package that with the additional parts of the plan we're working on now, so that before your meeting with the council, you will have a completed, updated draft for a common discussion between you and the council, making sure we're on the same page, we're touching all the bases you want touched, the council is comfortable with the direction we're taking, and we can then move it forward. So that's our goal, because we have it scheduled tentatively for you to adopt it on December 12th. Now, that's kind of a later date than we might like, because first, the next day, we need to send it out to the reviewing agencies, so we have to have them all made and ready to go. And also, it's getting into the holidays. Anything after Thanksgiving until Christmas, sometimes it's hard to get a quorum, it's hard to get things done. So we're going to see if we could work with you to maybe get it done a little sooner than that. But what we're looking at then is, once it's done, and now we get to the key points here, which is that we have to send it out to a whole group of agencies to review before we can take action on it. The county, the state, transportation groups, other communities, they have 60 days to reply. And during that 60 days, we can do additional public meetings. One of the things we're going to talk about today is how we've been doing on our electronic material. But when we get down there, it is really important that the council approve this on a specific date. You see it on that timetable. If they can't approve it on that date, they may not be able to get it on the ballot. So we're trying to give them as much flexibility as we can, give them a little breathing room if we need it as we get later into the process. So where we stand tonight is, we're doing our meeting tonight, you have those nine chapters that I'd mentioned, five more are underway. In fact, as of today, we finished the text on four, we only have the circulation element left to finish, and we're meeting with the traffic engineer on Wednesday to try to get his input to complete this process. So you'll have the whole draft, and one of the things we'd like to talk to you about is maybe putting this on your November meeting, if you're comfortable with the direction we're taking now, and after we've talked to the town council, if they're comfortable with it, to put it on your agenda for November. Hopefully, we'll have time. I talked to Mark, he may have one, maybe two items for the regular agenda, but we may have time to do it that night, if you're comfortable in doing that. So the goals of the new plan, you have the draft plan that we prepared, and I want to reiterate that it is a draft plan. We were working on it quickly, we've had some typos in there we shouldn't have had, but we'd like to get any comments that you have. But it's going to be shorter. You can see from what you have now compared with what we have currently approved, it's much shorter. It's try to make it easier to read, take out a lot of all the planning jargon and the tables and the where-to fours and heretoes and that sort of thing, and make it easier for people to read. Have more pictures, more graphics, more maps. Focus on the goals. The goals in there are the same ones that are in your general plan now, except if they've been modified by your staff to say, that's been completed, or we need to rework that, or something else. For instance, your parks plan was just approved in 2020. They have a whole set of new goals for the parks plan. So we'll take out our goals, put in their goals, so that the parks plan and the general plan coordinate together. So we're doing that as we go along. We'll also maybe have some new goals for you to consider and new policies because of things that have changed since this plan was done. Some things, for instance, on environmental issues, that we might want to include that we didn't have previously. Some things on maybe urban design or community design, to try to get a handle maybe on what the community should look like in the future, as far as additional ideas for land development. So we'll be looking at those as well. I handed out tonight some additional information. What we're trying to do is use our current software, nothing fancy, not a lot of snazzy pictures and photo shopping, but what can we do to make it look more attractive, more modern, and more like a magazine than a textbook? So you have some additional chapters. What we were looking at, you can see on the table of contents, is rather than having every chapter and every exhibit and every goal all mentioned there, just to group them together to say, this is what's in chapter 1, 2, 3, 4. The colors we're proposing to use are the colors of the town logo, the green and the orange, and then the blue and the gray, and we would then sequence those. So instead of having that little tab in the middle, you'd actually see colors on the top that would tell you what chapter you're in. So we're hoping those kinds of things will make it easier for people to use in the future. One of the big things that changes in a general plan is the vision for the community. Where do people see their town 10 years from now or 20 years from now? And that's why we're thinking about proposing some additional goals for your consideration. And we're having community meetings. This is a community meeting. The attendance is somewhat slight, and we will be having one at your November meeting. But we have a concern, and concern's been raised to us about COVID. People won't come to a meeting if you make them wear a mask, they won't come to a meeting if you don't make them wear a mask, or they won't come at all because they're nervous. So rather than do that right now, again, because of the time crunch, we decided we would go electronic. And we did two surveys that are on our town's website right now. The first one I call the 20-question survey, and we have today 227 responses to that, and we'll look at it in just a second. We have 188 seats in the auditorium this afternoon. So we have 50 more people who filled out surveys than could fit in this room. And normally, when you do a neighborhood meeting or a public meeting, you might have 20 people in a room. So we think we're doing pretty well as far as getting input, given the situation that we're in. We also had a survey you may have seen called the Top Five Things. What are the five things you like best about Prescott Valley? What are five things you'd like to see improved in the future? And then that one about Prescott Valley is a blank, blank, blank community. How would you fill in the blanks today and 10 years from now? We've gotten very good response on that one as well. A lot of good ideas, people thinking what they like. They like to maintain the character, the community is part of the smaller community, friendly community. They also have some things they want to work on, transportation, appearance of the community, rehabilitation of some of the older areas, those sorts of things. So I think the council will get good information from this, because everybody can fill it out. Chamber can do it, people can do it at home. We put it out on the Next Door website to 12,000 households in town. So we're hoping we'll get a good response, and we think we have that pretty well right now. So this is what we have, it's on our website, you may have seen it. Click those little QR codes and boom, you're right there. This is what it looks like right now, 20-question survey. The upper right part of that is what they look like. We're on Survey Monkey, if you're familiar with Survey Monkey, and they give you little graphs like that. So you can look at it and say, okay, which are the larger bars? And normally, you start right in the center, neither agree or disagree, then you look and say, how many are above that, how many are below that? Is it really close, or is it really wide? So that's what we're looking at, is how to put this into the citizen comments on our general plan. But as I'd mentioned, people like the Parks and Recreation Program, the library and our educational system. They like the fact that the business sector has goods and services that they can use right here in Prescott Valley without necessarily having to drive to another community to the west, and that they think that impact fees that the town charges are reasonable for the services that they get, and that the town is cost-effective, which is great information if you're a town. Some of the things they are concerned about is we're moving away from that town and country idea that people had developed, and that the revitalization of some of our older areas. They're 40 years old, more than that, 20 years from now, they'll be 50 years old, and they can, all older neighborhoods could use work. Improvement of the streets, cost of housing is a concern, and as we were talking about just earlier on this, compatibility between land uses. That's an issue for people that comes up in a recurring basis, is I'm here, they're there, how do we fit the pieces together? And that's one of the things we may be suggesting some new goals and policies to you on, to try to help improve that compatibility between uses, because as the areas fill in, you're going to have more and more of those issues in the future. So the next steps, we have our meeting tonight. I'd like to review the chapters with you when I finish this presentation. We'll go kind of one by one and see what your thoughts are. We will include those surveys, we're probably going to leave that survey open through the end of November. So we want to give everybody time, there isn't a cutoff date, you can only take it once, but we want as many people to take it as they can. And we will include that in the November draft of this. It may even be the one that we look at in the spring, once we get additional information together. We don't need it right now, but we wanted to let you know we're working on it, it will come into the draft later on. So we want to have this done prior to your meeting, meeting on the 4th with the council. We can bring it together, and hopefully, we will have something that you can look at in November. So this is the three words. This has actually gotten quite a bit of interesting discussion, is what words do people use? Most of the words are positive. Some of them, quotes around them, but I think it's going very well. So that's the presentation. Be glad to answer any questions you have. Then I would like to go through the draft with you, chapter by chapter, and get your comments or suggestions about how you think the staff is going. And I should really say that it's not just me. I'm one person who's come in here, it's a team. Joe Scott has been great to work with, and we know Joe, he's been very helpful, as have everybody else on the team we've been working with.
So just for clarification, our meetings and when? We have to approve this before it goes to the council?
Well, actually, you approve it, and it goes, once you've approved it in draft, it actually goes out to the reviewing agencies. Then we get their comments back, just like we're getting everybody else's, and then you have two meetings in the spring.
And those are the open hearings?
Yes. And you're required, actually, to have them in two different locations. So we would have one here and somewhere else. But that is the time you actually officially recommend it to the council. So you've got, there is quite a bit of time, actually, between now and when the council actually takes, but we don't want to get off course. We don't want to deliver a product to them that they're not comfortable with.
So will you be putting the, I'm going to say, the final plan before our two hearings in March and April? Will you have those out to the community so that they can review them, so they're not reviewing them during our hearing?
Oh, yes. Yes, what we would, we hope to do, and hopefully, you will have your new community development manager by then, who will be standing here, helping you finish the rest of the process. My goal is to get it completed to you in a draft, to get it approved through you, and get out to the reviewing agencies. That gives you at least two months in there to get your new person and help get them up to speed. During those neighborhood meetings that you're having, we will have distributed that broadly on our town's website and whoever else might like to have it, so that we come to you with suggestions, residents, what the outside agency said, anything we get from our surveys. It'll all get packaged together at that time, so the council gets the complete package. But for right now, we want to be sure we've got something that gets that clock ticking in December.
Any other questions of staff?
Yes. We have the joint study session with the council on November 4th. Will we have an updated draft prior to that?
Yes.
And do you know when that will be, how much time we'll have?
Well, we're trying to finish it all this week. And if not, but then we have to get it printed. And we don't know if we're going to print it in-house. We printed this on our hard-working copy machine, and we bound it in our mailroom. But the next one will be bigger than this, and we'll probably need 20 or 25 copies for you and the council and staff, so we may have to take it out. And I don't know what their turnaround time would be. But our goal, between our little team, Joe and I, is to have it done by next Tuesday. So we should have it printed, and I would probably hand-deliver it to all of you, so you have enough time and not have to go through the mail system, which can be a challenge as you're getting into the holidays as well. So we would get it to you, you would have it prior to, hopefully, at least a week or 10 days, prior to that meeting on the 4th, as will the council, so that we can have a real discussion about things that, whatever you like or don't like, or would like to see added or deleted, or whatever.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, so. Okay, let's, no other questions, let's take a little, a walk through the book. You'll see, the table of contents will look like what you see now. The introduction is pretty standard material, it's been, again, it's been shortened, and we will add a couple of spots in there where we're talking about our open houses. We will be filling that part in later. The community vision element is the one that you have now with blue on the top, so you could look at that one and this one and see what the difference will look like when you get your next one, actually. It's in behind that colored cover. And we've talked about how the goals fit together. This vision statement actually was updated when you did your new website. So this has come right from your town's website, so it's current. The goals came from your town website. The guiding principles and the hierarchy are from your current plan, and we've used that same pattern throughout. So it still says principles, goals, policies, so anybody laying the two side by side should be able to see, that's the old one, this is the new one, and this is how they fit together. The growth area element, we're showing the plan developments. One of the things we're not doing here is getting into a lot of the specifics about individual cases and how many vacant lots there are left to be built on and that sort of thing. That changes so quickly that we wanted to stay away from that and say, this is how many lots there are, these are the projects we're working on, and that's where the town's focus will be. So we still use the tiered growth analysis that was done previously. That's been fairly successful for the community, and we'd like to continue that on. The town center where we are now has been a good project that we want to emphasize for the future. We have the tiers and then the pads that we had talked about previously. And then we go to the land use designations, and those are, you've seen those before. Future annexations, we're not looking at a lot of future annexations, and if we do, they will be within the town's existing planning area. I know no ideas to go beyond, further out in any direction, more fill in the gaps that we have. And you'll see the guiding principles. We have some areas underneath where, if we have a lot of goals, where people might say, well, where does that show up? You can look at another chapter and see it as well, to try to coordinate between chapters. Now, that's quite an issue in your current 250-page book, because it's pretty thick to try to find it. We're hoping it is less of a problem with a thinner one like we have. The land use element is the next, and it's probably one of the more important, along with the growth element in the whole general plan, because that's where people are looking at what's happening in the future.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Ballmer, when would you like to maybe hear some of our comments?
Just interrupt me anytime.
Or do you want to just zip through this whole thing, and then we go back and give comments?
However you would like. I was just going along until I saw somebody raise their hand.
I think if it's fresh on your mind, go for it.
Yes, please.
Okay, what time do they turn off the lights?
If you would like, I can talk to you privately, if you've got a lot of questions.
No, because I think some of these things I would truly love my fellow commissioners to hear.
Oh, sure.
I noticed in going through our draft that it's called, it says Prescott Valley residents, Prescott Valley, and I think that we should all be called out and stated as the town of Prescott Valley.
Which page are you on?
Oh, multiple pages.
Oh, okay.
You know, I mean, it is the town of Prescott Valley.
Okay.
So that was one of my comments. Like here on page seven, it says a 2035 vision statement for Prescott Valley. I think it should say a 2035 vision statement for the town of Prescott Valley.
Town of, okay.
But it doesn't here in the big bold. I mean, we need to be consistent, and it's not.
Okay, great.
Then, and I'm not going to monopolize this, I promise, but one other little thing. In your little, like, go to page 21 for me. I don't know what you call that little line section where you just briefly said you're making it easier for people to connect, right? Where it says, see the land use element?
Yes.
I went and looked at all of those, and I think maybe we should say page and help our readers go to that page instead of have to mumble through?
We're looking at two things on that, and for your advice. One is, we can add the page numbers once we have the whole book together. The other is, we can just delete that altogether.
Ah, perfect.
Yes, thank you.
I love it.
Good.
Made it difficult.
I have one more, and then I'll be quiet, team.
Well, please monopolize the meeting, let's.
Seriously? Yes.
I don't know, you don't know what you're asking, Wayne.
Uh-oh.
On page seven, we use the words "our" and "we," and I don't think we should, we, I don't think that we should use that. "We" are the center, "our emergence," "we remain safe." I don't know, that bothered me.
Okay.
Because it was just on this particular page where we used that.
Oh, "we" as a community, is that one you're looking at right?
Yeah, all of them, "our small town," "we remain as safe," "our community leaders," "our environment." That's just me processing.
Unfortunately, I can't necessarily change that, because that's what's on the town's website right now.
Oh, okay.
But thank you for the comment, because normally, you write these in the third person. It's not in the third person.
I know, I know.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you for letting me talk.
Anybody else want to chime in right now?
If there's nobody else, maybe I could have their time.
I just have one. I noticed in several places that you use the term reduce automobile dependency.
Yes. How are you going to do that? I don't know, that's in your current plan.
In the 2030, 2025?
And I was nervous about taking out some of those things, because if that's a community goal, I don't want to say it's not valid. But it is something, a good thing to talk with the council about, because you don't really have many alternatives. I mean, you have the micro transit that they talked about, which will work well for certain groups of people. But if I'm going to the Kia dealership, there aren't many choices, you know, so.
Well, it's a nice walk.
It is. A brisk walk, yes.
Unrealistic for too many.
You used your dependency.
Good landing.
Mr. Ballmer, one thing I've noticed you, in the plan, you mentioned bike and hiking trails and pedestrian trails. I've noticed lately that a majority of the people I'm seeing on bikes are not pedaling their electric, and that's going to make a difference in the biking trails, because I know walking down Granville Fairway the other day, there were three people on the wide sidewalk coming toward me, and they were all on electric bikes. So we need to kind of take that into consideration.
And I think legally, if a bike has any type of motor, it's technically, it's considered a automobile, yeah.
And between a bicycle and a pedestrian, the pedestrian always has the right of way, whether it's an e-bike or a regular bike. But that's a continual challenge with bicycle riders, is you're on the same path.
It didn't work in my case.
In Queen Creek, where I was before this, the question was equestrian. What do you do after the horse has gone through there and you're running along, you know? That could be a problem as well, but you don't have that problem here.
But that's something that we need to take into consideration, that bike trails are have to be designated.
I would even say, e-bikes, or even, I mean, there are a lot of other bikes that have gas motors on them. When they do that, technically, that changes the designation.
They should be.
Golf carts.
If there's a bike lane on a street, that's where they need to be, not on the bike path.
Correct.
But then we have a lot of communities where we have the paseos, which are basically larger sidewalks, and you don't want bicycles or anything on a street because of how narrow the road is.
Exactly right. And I've seen you have some challenges with narrow roadways in this area, too. Okay, great. Who's next?
Anybody? Anybody else?
Oh, I thought lots of things.
Okay. Well, let's talk land use, then.
Okay, what pages?
You see, we have talked about your uses, the current uses. You have a lot of information here about, how many acres of M1 zoning did you have at the date this was written? Well, that changes every month. So we've taken that out and generalized more as to approximately this many acres at this location. So when you look at the map, the map then makes more sense as to what's where, and why is it where it is. We've tried to incorporate some of your plans that weren't included, like your one on the town center, but also the one along Robert Road, where reinvestment can be done. So we're trying to incorporate all the new plans that the town has done since this was done, to try to bring them all together. And I don't know how many of you like to read municipal budgets, but you have a great municipal budget here in Prescott Valley, very clear, easy to read, and it has graphics and maps and colors in it, and that's a great segue to have everything try to be more colorful. But you have the descriptions of the general plan land use, the pads that we've got in there, starting on page 56.
Whoa, what happened? How did we get to 56 so fast?
Oh, okay. Those have not changed. I mean, many people asked us, are we proposing to change any colors on the map? And the answer is no. The map that you see in your current plan is this same one. So the PAD areas will remain the same, the zoning, the land use on the other areas will remain the same unless you or the council decides to change it. But the staff isn't suggesting any changes in the colors on the map that might offend a neighbor by saying, hey, the town just did this and we're concerned about it.
So we have this marvelous pull-out map in here, which is phenomenal.
Yep, it is.
And then, like on page 57, we have those tiny little cutout maps that don't do anything. I love your big pull-out map. I love your big pull-out map, and why not just have that and remove these other little things that really don't mean anything because you don't know where the total connection is?
Yeah. The idea in, again, and it's in your current plan, and we can change it, is if, for instance, if you do the big fold-out map and you look up there and it says Village PAD D1 up in the upper left.
Right.
Then you can look back here and see D1, and it gives you more details. It's approximately 1,200 acres. Here's the character that we wanted to see there, the land use, the rationale for it. So you might have to go to the big map
Okay, so here.
and then jump back to the other ones.
Maybe on the little maps, you could say larger map page, blah, blah, blah.
I think maybe grid sections on the map, that might be better, better way to do it.
Yes, Matt.
Yeah. Like a Thomas Guide, so to speak, they were done back in the day.
Well, because we can, for instance, on each one of those pads, we could say, see land use map, you know, upper left or something like that, if we don't want to put grid lines over it necessarily because it might cover up something.
I'm not saying grid lines, but basically you could.
What if we did, like, numbers down the side and letters across the top?
Yeah, just around on the side, and you got it.
So we have numbers and letters, and we could say E4. Would that work?
I think that would definitely work, yes.
I do, too.
Okay.
I mean, I also agree.
Well, once you get the combination here
Yes.
and see the PAD designation and find it on the map, it takes a little, a little learning curve in getting to coordinate.
And really, again, we're just trying to make this easier for people to understand.
And we'll look at that. We also could do something with each one of these individual PADs to explain it a little bit more. But this came right, pretty much right from your current general plan.
I know, but remember, we don't stay current or stay in the box.
That's right.
Okay.
But I'll be glad to make some changes because the whole idea is to make it easier for people to use.
I have another map question. If you could go back to page 42.
Page 42?
Are you there?
I'm there.
So the reference features are really hard to see, and I think that map should take up the whole page. And then, I'm not so keen, it says "draft" in there, which shouldn't be in the map, and I don't think that we should have logos of businesses in the map.
That map, actually, we did not create.
Correct, okay.
We borrowed it from APS.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But I think it should be a larger map. I think it needs to take, they need to take up more.
We'll see if we can do that.
And it's not updated.
Right.
Yes. Because this little exhibit, that would go away. We can move it on to the next page. Probably, you know, needs to be kind of wordsmithed a little bit to get a little more space for that map.
Yeah, and this map says, "Draft, February 2, 2006."
Because, yeah, this doesn't have the substation, which is north of Glassford there as well.
We were attempting to see if we can get an updated map to this. We still are. It's just, this was the most recent one we had.
Okay, so you're going to make sure that all the maps are current?
As current as we can make them because we don't generate all the maps.
Mr. Ballmer?
Yes.
Could we also have all of the colored maps be full page?
Oh, yes.
Like on page 40, 41, Exhibit LU 3.1, could they all be full page? Could they be blown up to eight and a half by 11?
We can, yes.
That would make it a lot easier to read them.
Yeah, because the map on 40, you can't even read.
No. And I have a very powerful magnifying glass, and it didn't even help.
Yeah. And again, the map on page 40 isn't our map. We borrowed that from
Oh, okay.
the town of Prescott for that. But yes, we can certainly take off some of the space in the top and the bottom and just enlarge the maps.
That would help a lot. Thank you.
One of the things I'm also looking at is just, I can see the date here for the airport specific plan, and I believe that's probably changed a little bit from the city of Prescott, but that's from January 17, 2002.
Yes, we have a new map for that.
Having the main thoroughfares named on the maps would help put them into context more easily.
Yes, it would. You don't know the streets like the palm of your hand? Well, we'll look at that. And again, some of the maps, because of the way they're drawn, who drew them, that sort of thing, we have access to. Others, we don't. But we will look at that as well, as far as adding street names.
Mr. Ballmer?
Yes.
I'm noticing throughout this draft that there are some areas that are highlighted in yellow.
Yes.
Could you explain why there's a few that are highlighted in yellow?
Because we were still working on those when we put this together. We didn't have the data that we were going to need.
Okay.
But yes, the next one you have, they won't have any yellow, except in the front where we said, we had that fill-in-the-date thing in the, on the visioning section. But the new one will not have that.
I thought maybe they were really important and we had to address them today.
Well, they're all really important.
No, but I thought they were really important.
No. What it was is, we were working on it and trying to get a document to you. With the lead time for us to prepare a document to get to you today, we didn't have a lot of time to put it together.
Right.
And because of that, we didn't do as good editing job as we might have.
I think it's excellent. I mean, it's far more than I expected, so congratulations.
Thank you. So, okay, good suggestions. Let's keep going. Anything else on the land use section?
Yes, page 65. Are we still in land use yet?
As long as you want to be in land use, we're in land use.
I don't understand the focus revitalization area policies addressing the following issues: pressures for change and immediate guidance. I don't know what that means.
Well, this, again, was in your current general plan. If you look up the paragraph above it, "The focus revitalization areas were identified by the community, the Citizens' Advisory Committee, town staff, and elected appointed officials," through all of this. That's what they said.
But what does it mean?
Well...
I think I know, maybe.
Tell me.
Well, there's been a controversy as to whether you preserve the character of the original old town.
Oh, that's right.
Which is a bit tacky. Or do we update it and revitalize it and replace the decrepit old buildings? So I think at one time, there was a pretty strong move to preserve Old Town, Prescott Valley, the original, you know, the Dairy Queen and the original motel and some of those things.
So is that still applicable today? Probably not, so.
Well, one of the things we were going to talk to you and to the council about is, we have two maps that aren't here. One is a reinvestment area, and the one is a redevelopment area. One of them, you're actually applying for money to buy substandard homes and remove them or upgrade them. And the other, you're encouraging the private sector to come and do that. What we're going to propose is we merge those two together and just call it a reinvestment area, where the town could reinvest and the private sector could reinvest. The private sector is going to want to watch the town's money. They put money where their mouth is. Do we do streets there? Do we do street lighting there? Do we do neighborhood improvements there? If the town takes the lead to install these things, the private sector will say, well, you know, maybe I should buy a house there. I can fix it up, and I'm, it's going to be worth more. Or realtors will say, look at what the town is doing. This is a good place for you to invest. And by having people invest, it will improve those neighborhoods. And once they start to improve, then other people will say, hey, you know, I'm going to get more for my money if we all improve, and it'll move forward. Because that's about the most cost-effective way, but it has to be a partnership. Private sector will follow the public sector, and the public sector needs to support the private sector. Because otherwise, there's simply not enough money available to try to do it on your own.
And the Highway 69 corridor has been part of that. It's been a slow process over a lot of years, but it's, from where it was 10 years ago, it's improved a lot.
Yes.
And it probably still has a ways where it could go, but
And I think you would see that. Some of the things we're working on now would be kind of more, kind of, when you reinvest, what kinds of things would the town like to see? You know, is there something about signage, landscaping, directional signs to try to help people understand where they're going and how it should look? And so you'll see more of that next time around. But the whole idea of, you have 50-year-old housing almost that probably wasn't of top quality when it was built. If you don't do anything, it's not going to get any better. So, sorry for the long answer. So, anyway, housing affordability, again, is the issue. That's coming up more and more in the survey as an issue. And if you've looked on Zillow or Realtor.com recently, take a walk around Prescott Valley and see what homes are selling for these days. Even homes that you would think, oh, that's a kind of a modest home. Look it up. It's probably in the 300s, most likely.
400.
So.
350 and 400.
So, anyway.
Not when we bought them.
I know. No, but look now. I mean, one of the challenges we're having is lack of available housing.
Well, I noticed in your, in the survey that you've done, that one of the things that was a positive, that they thought that the fees and so forth that the town was charging for new construction was acceptable or was approved, but yet, you know, that's part of what brings the cost of the homes up also.
Oh, it is. But it also, then, improves the area that people will say, I'll buy there because it looks nice.
I'm for them, but it's
Yes.
that what people think about affordable housing, developers just don't have the ability to come in and do that anymore.
And if you think back to when the town was formed, if it had at that time a development impact fee that would have paid for the streets and the other things, it would have benefited the community till now. But you can't go backwards. So the town's impact fees help over here, but they don't do a lot over there. So, good.
I don't understand this, and I don't agree with it. Affordability of housing...
Which page are you on?
65. I'm still in land use.
Okay.
Affordability of housing directly affects housing availability. We certainly do not have a lack of available housing. We, as in all other communities, have a lack of affordability for certain demographics. We've got, we've got housing.
We have housing.
We, it's popping out of the ground.
But is it, is it the type that the demographics are going to want in 2035?
I don't know.
So what we're suggesting is that a broader range of housing options, because affordability is related to availability. If I, if nobody sells it, I can't buy it. And if I can't buy it, there's a shortage.
Wayne, kind of piggyback off of that, since Sandy brought up demographics. When are we expecting the 2020 census data that will actually have a lot of that information?
Boy, I wish I had a good answer. They're telling us now, they told us it was September. Now they're telling us December. And so you will see on a lot of things, and what we will be giving you next is, we may have to go back in February or March and update some of these things with the 2020 census figures. But we're, but we're trying to actually to stay away from specific numbers. We were working on population projections the other day because in order to have an idea of where you're going, you need to know how many people are coming to the party. And the way population projections is, they're all over the, all over the table about how you come up with one. And they're all based on the census. Well, we don't have good census information, so we made an educated guess. We'll see how it turns out when the census comes back. But they're all educated guesses right now.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Ballmer?
Please, Sandra.
Looking toward 2035, on page 51, I'm looking at resort. Do we have anybody or any land or anything that could be made into a resort?
Yes, we have sites that could be a resort.
That would actually appeal to a developer?
Well, it's that part that's the challenge.
Associate RV.
Yeah. What we'd be looking at is, in this area, I mean, to the west is fairly well built out. That's distinctive. So how would, how would we make Prescott Valley unique? What could we do to say, come here, not there? Sedona's really, really crowded. Maybe that isn't a good choice. Prescott's pretty well developed. Maybe that isn't a good choice. Come here instead. We've got a lot of options. We've got things we have now. We have vacant space. We have some space with great views. And I used to tell people that hillside views in Arizona are like beaches in California. You know, if you have them, you want to keep them and use them the best you can. And if you think of where resorts are, they're often in the hillsides. So if you look at your hillsides and say, we've got potential right there, that's what I would be saying.
That's right. And could we somehow address that in, going forward in 2035, so we do not take our valuable land that has views and use it for something other than?
We could, we could look at adding a goal or a policy about trying to retain desirable sites for the highest and best use in the future, something like that. Because it might, it might not be a resort. It might be, you know, a school or something else that you might like to have. Because one of the other things that would make Prescott Valley unique is to expand your higher education options.
Okay. Thank you.
These are great comments. Okay. Are we, are we still in land use?
Take us where you want to take us.
Take me out of land use.
I think we've got, I've got a good sense from you on the land use issues. But from a broader sense, how does it read to you? You got it for the first time. You're reading through. You're an interested citizen, want to know what's going on in my community. Would this, would this give you information without bogging you down, or does it leave you puzzled as to what you just read?
I think for me right now, it's very similar to the existing plan, how it reads. Of course, definitely, I think I agree with some of the comments here on, you know, better maps and so forth. But also, you know, keep in mind, I mean, I know that we also give the general plan out on CDs.
Oh, yes.
And that has better, sometimes you can blow up those maps a little bit better and so forth than what is technically in, you know, printed form.
Yes, because you can blow those things up, yeah. Yes.
And the average person is going to go to certain areas that interest them.
And that'll be it.
Those, they're not going to go from page one to
Right, no. Like we did.
So I'm going to go to
Take a nap this afternoon to get through it.
I think we plow through this because it's our job.
Yes.
And the average citizen, I think, is going to look at it and say, ah.
I want to look at the growth element. I want to look at recreation. I want to look at circulation. Where are the blue pages starting, you know, that sort of thing? That's what we want to look at. And we are going to go through this, again, this was the first, the later chapters actually look different than these because they've sort of evolved as we've gone along. Now we're going back to some of these and try to bring them up to the new chapters. So you'll see some changes in these when you see them next.
On page 68, under Policies, LU A7-4, locate affordable housing close to employment centers makes sense. And then it says, including housing for seasonal workers. I'm not sure we have much in the way of seasonal workers.
It was in there from before, but my concern is, why, why did we use that word? If we have, for, close to employment centers, it's for anybody who needs employment.
I just, you know, if we were
We don't have crops. We don't have crops.
I think that, I'm not even sure that including housing for seasonal.
Yeah, that, that wasn't ours. I've seen that before in, for instance, communities involved with gaming. They have less seasonal workers for those. Scottsdale has an issue with this, about seasonal people coming down for festivals and all that.
We're kind of the in-between location here.
Yes. But, but some people do that, but I hadn't seen it here. It was just in your plan, so it continued.
Most of our seasonal people are old retired people.
Or Canadians, eh?
Well, Canadians go to the valley.
Okay.
The valley comes up here for summer sometimes.
Yeah, but not to work.
No.
Okay. Okay, as we're moving along into the housing element, you will see it has a lot more information in it. The one that we have now, you'll see, has lots of tables going back to, what was the housing in 1990 to 2000 to 2010, and breakdowns by income and rent, all of that will be gone. It isn't really germane. What people want to know is, what are you doing about housing in your town now? And what are your goals for the future? So, it's going to have a lot more color, a lot fewer tables.
Well, you're talking about something that we don't have.
Yes. That, and the circulation element is the next one that you don't have that we're working on now, but it is, again, going to be much shorter. We have a lot of stuff in there about, if you want to be a junior traffic engineer, what is the level of service and that sort of thing. So, looking at that. Now, the education element is a new one, and the public safety one is new. And you'll see there's, there will be a little more text, but not a whole lot. There'll be pictures, some of the things we're doing, and the guiding principles. They're all going to look more like that.
On the education element, one of the things I noticed right off the bat is that we're focusing primarily on the public schools.
Yes.
And, of course, we have quite a few charters here in town, and just, you know, I don't want them to be felt left out, and maybe we can add some of those pictures.
Okay.
Because all the pictures that we have right now on the education element are of public schools instead of charter schools. And then also, on the school locations, maybe we differentiate between public and charter.
Okay.
And then also, we don't have, I've noticed there's a few things that have been left off. So, we have the Up by Continuation School, which is off of Baja Circle. Also, you know, we're, you know, listing the fire stations. Technically speaking, Carter is a fire station because we house Engine 540 out of that. Also, Station 54 is within the town limits, and that's off of 169.
Okay.
Yeah, the map's not, and of course, the map's not, you know, that big, you know, that big, but, and then kind of, you know, you look at Granville Elementary, it's kind of, you can barely tell that that's even a, you know, a school site, just because it's being, the map's kind of taken off there.
Well, if we, if we enlarged these maps to be full page.
Or even like a fold, even a fold-out, wouldn't be, a pull-out wouldn't even, would be, not a bad idea.
We can look at fold-outs. They just, they add more complexity to your plan, rather than a whole page we can do easily.
Okay. I mean, either way, I mean, just because if we include the entire town, especially 116, now the area is off 169, that may not, I don't know if you're going to be able to fit that all on one.
Yeah, the map on page 34 is really the only one that shows it all the way down there. And then I think it would be a good idea for you to take Prescott Valley off of Dewey-Humboldt. Dewey-Humboldt might be a little unhappy with us.
Which, which page are you looking at?
34.
That's funny.
I noticed that.
Oh, yes.
That's actually in the current plan.
On page 34?
34, under land ownership map.
Yes.
Where it says, the town Dewey-Humboldt boundaries, it says Prescott Valley, and it's.
Dewey-Humboldt doesn't like us specifically anyway, so.
Oh. Okay. Well, good, well. Good, Wayne.
And one of the things, you mentioned this earlier, now we have, the town boundaries, I'm kind of going to 34 here, but then, of course, you know, and I think maybe, you know, we mentioned it briefly in the vacant land sphere of influence. And maybe there's another way to put on there with the blue, the blue lines there that are sphere of influence.
Which page are you looking at?
34 again.
Oh, okay.
One of the things that, you know, trying to explain where the town boundaries are, and it's like, you see the town boundaries, but then you see in a lot of maps, the outlining area, which is technically the.
The bigger blue line.
Yeah, the sphere of influence, but we don't, we've only really, I mean, it's only referenced sphere of influence once there on vacant, under vacant. I'm hoping I'm making sense there, Wayne.
Oh, yes. Because looking on that page, then, we could have another line, maybe even, well.
Different color, perhaps?
Below the, the red dash line that says interface boundary, if we put the solid blue line down there and said sphere of influence.
Influence, yeah.
We could fit it in.
I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, because the interface boundary, I don't think makes sense to any of us.
No, it's, it's over on the other side, that's the Prescott, Prescott Valley issue.
Yeah, it's the boundary, it's the boundary line, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, are we on to page 35 yet?
We went way past that.
We went way past that.
We, we're going all over the place.
No, that's good. Really, it is. So, you will see the updated public safety. We will look for additional spots where you can show charter schools, and we'll make sure we've got the information on.
I mean, and hopefully, I mean, the rest of the commission agrees, differentiate charter schools from public schools.
I do, absolutely.
And then, or even private schools for that matter, because, you know, private charter, public schools.
So, here's a question. For example, under public safety on page X, 10.1 introduction, chapter 10.
Yes.
Under policies, it says meet or exceed a five-minute police response time at least 90% of the time.
Yes.
That made me ask a question. How then does the general plan include measurable goals that are monitored and reported regularly? So, we've got this in our plan, how the heck do we know if it's even working? How do we do that and watch it?
Well, on that one, the, the town manager and the town council watched that very closely, response time. And, and we added that in, and the, and the chief actually added some additional language to that about, about the, a time for the 911 caller to, to get it. And then for the initial response, so that it's tracked very carefully, as, as is the fire.
But not just specifically for this, that made me ask about the overall measurable goals.
Yes.
That we're putting in this book. We've got goals for kids, goals for this. How do we know and make that happen? How do we monitor all that?
Well, the state law says that the community development department needs to give a progress report every year to the town council, and that would be one of those. But the town council gets a report from the police department on a regular basis. So, it isn't necessarily for, for you, for us at the staff. This is more an item for the police department to know they are going to be held responsible by the town council.
Just, I think, I think I know where Commissioner Griffiths is going with this. Something measurable, that's what you're looking for.
Yes.
So, for instance, I know the fire department, we track on a monthly basis, you know, we're, you know, we're calls, responses, that type of thing. I believe the police department does the same thing.
And you'll, and you'll note, we did contact the fire chief and asked them specifically for their response time as well.
I think all the departments.
Larry, can you talk on your mic? They can't pick you up.
Yeah, it's having a hard time.
I think all the departments report to the council at certain times to give status of what's working and, and how it's going. So, I think that goes to each, each portion of the staff.
So, then maybe in our introduction and our vision, we talk about something of processing and working and monitoring measurable goals. That got everybody excited, didn't it?
Well, is, is that the purpose of the general plan?
I don't know.
Typically, the general plan is presented to the public, actually, if you think of the author, the author is the town council. And they're giving it to the public and saying, this is how we see our town develop in the next 10 years. These are the goals that we have set and with our partners, and some of them are going to be sort of lofty platitudes like affordable housing, but others, the council wants to be more specific about, which is emergency services. That's one of the reasons the mayor wanted to add a section to the general plan, just on emergency services. We can, we can certainly modify it. What we've been trying to do is to say, what, what would a citizen want to know if they read this about their emergency services?
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. And then the remaining chapters are pretty much administrative sorts of things. How do you pay for it? That's going to change a little bit, but that's all council stuff. How do, citizens, how are we going to use your money to do the things we're saying we'd like to do? Then getting into, how do you actually implement it? The economic development element is done, and that's something that we talk a lot about as far as, who's here now? How do we want to get more people to come into the future? And then, general plan administration element, this, Sandra, I believe, comes to your topic, which is that we will have, at the end of this, if you look at our current general plan, there's a big table, right? The last thing, there's a table, has all these goals and little buttons as to who's responsible for what. We will have something like that in here. We haven't prepared it yet because we don't have all the chapters done. But there will be something like that so that people would know, that's the goal, this is the person who's supposed to take the lead on it. Okay. Anything, have we touched on every hot button?
And I think, Wayne, you addressed it earlier, but if anyone has any individual concerns, they can get ahold of you.
Absolutely. And if you have any comments after tonight, or things you've thought about that you'd like to add, give me a call at City Hall, or I'm, I'm glad to.
Give me a call at City Hall. Are you keeping a formalized copy where you're making all these changes?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yeah, and, and we'll, we'll be glad to take any of these changes, so. And we'll see how it goes. But overall, kind of in closing tonight, you think we're in the, headed in the right direction?
Yeah, I, I agree with Sandra is that I was amazed that you had produced this in the amount of time that you had.
That's amazing.
You know, from, you know, we were a little behind, and I think we're now ahead.
I do, too.
Well, we're, we're caught up. We're caught up. And I would like to get a little ahead, if we can talk to the council, if they're of like mind with you, that generally we're in the right direction, to have this on your November meeting agenda for consideration. And if we can, we can. If not, we'll hold it over. Just like to get a little more breathing room for the staff in there as far as the next steps in the process.
And right now, our, primarily, the work study that we're going to have with council is just about the general plan, or do we want to?
Yes.
And then maybe another time, have another discussion with some other things with them?
Yes. I, I don't set those meetings up. We requested it.
No, I, and I, I have no, I have no problems with that, because definitely, I, you know, want to see, you know, us work together on this.
Because they have the same draft you have, and I'm, I'm getting comments from them. They promised them to me as well, which I will incorporate with yours, into the new draft. But what I want, I really want to be sure is both the commission and the council are saying we're going in the right direction, because time will be tight, and if we're not, we need to make course corrections as quickly as we can.
And then, just real quick, because you brought it up earlier, the survey, has, have any of the commissioners done the survey?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Okay, so.
If you go to the town's website and community development, well, here, I'll just give you this.
It's easy to follow. If I can follow it, I know all of you can follow it.
I was just curious.
So, so what did you think of it? As you're, as you're clicking and typing, what did you think?
Some of it I was able to go through rather simply, and, you know, especially the 20 question.
Yeah.
The other made me think a little more. That, that sometimes is a problem for me, so.
But did you think?
I worked my way through it.
As you're filling this out, did you think they're really seriously asking my opinion? Or that this is information I really would like to give them?
Well, I think, I think you always wonder, on something like that, does my opinion, does it really matter? So, and that's probably a question, no matter how you put it out there, that people are going to wonder, the people that don't fill it out are probably going to say, are not filling it out because.
What's the difference?
You know, what's the difference? They're going to do what they want to do.
Make any difference.
So, the people that do, and I looked at those numbers, and I thought, gosh, that's not very many, but maybe it is a pretty good.
We would like to get more. I mean, but there are two things. One is trust, and the other is commitment. Do people feel that you're actually wanting their advice? And we're really, truly wanting people to fill that out and get it back. And then the other is, do they trust you'll do something with it once you've got it?
One question I had, the November 8th, 2022, when it actually get, if we're able to get it all together and it gets voted on, does then it go back to the state for them to approve? Or is it just, that's it?
It's, that's it. Well, this, the town reports to the state, it was passed by X vote, and it's now adopted.
And keep in mind, after, you know, our elections used to be an odd, we were able to have elections an odd number of years. That changed, and we can't, now it's in even number of years.
Yes. So, it's either this or 2024, at which time you would be in violation of the state because it, your years expired in 2023.
I think we can all be ambassadors for this. Tell our friends, do the surveys, your opinion will be read, and it's taken seriously, taken into account. We can stimulate more responses.
Is it, that, if you come to a meeting, you know, as a citizen, you can look the person in the eye, and you write it out on the board or whatever it is, you have a higher level of trust or confidence that you, you've been listened to. That's one of the problems with electronics, is you don't know who's on the other end. But that's why we're trying to, to do it, keep it open longer, let people know they can apply, and then we will have the results in this book when it comes back. We'll say, we did this, and these were the responses we received.
And one thing I think that needs to be considered is that so many people that move into our area, move into the Granvilles and the Stone ridges and the Pronghorns, even Quailwood, where they don't ever go into the older areas of Prescott Valley. So, when they see that, they're, it doesn't, that doesn't really make sense to them, because they've, they've never gone into that area. Maybe now they're, they're driving through on the new viewpoint drive, you know, and, and that helps. But other than that, unless they go out to the back burner, they're not going to drive through any of the older areas. And so, when they see some of this about revitalization and the things, they've, a lot of people that live in the new communities have never been down Robert Road, they've never been down Navajo Drive. And so, they, they really have no clue what's going on in those areas, and I think that makes it a little more difficult, because some of the questions in the newer communities, I mean, we've got the good streets, we've got curb and gutter, we've got a sidewalk on one side, and we've got our little recreation centers in our communities and so forth. And so, those things are, you know, we've already got that. What, why do we need to worry about that, where the, in the older areas?
And you'll see, relatively speaking, there'll be more wording here about reinvestment and more maps and that than there is in the current plan. Because I think it's an issue you're going to have to look at one way or the other. It's, it's interesting, I've talked to some people, and I said, well, where do you live? They didn't say, I lived in Prescott Valley. They, I live in Quetwood, you know, I live in Granville, you know.
That's right.
I'm in this little balloon in this big city, I'm just right here.
That's right.
I don't know if you are familiar with.
And each of those subdivisions think that they're the best subdivision in Prescott Valley, so.
But I don't know if people, if you heard anybody say, well, I live in Barado. Barado's in Buckeye, but nobody says, I live in Buckeye. They say, I live in Barado. Verado."
I live in Verado, yeah.
And some of us in the older areas still remember, you know, what, Unit 15 and Unit 19 and Unit 12, and I owned a home in 12 and 14 and 19, you know, so, but when you say that to people, I...
What do you tell them?
They have no clue.
They needed a fancier name, you know. So, okay. Well, sorry...
Is there any way you can incentivize some of the residents who live in those older areas to fill out the questionnaire?
We've looked at that. It's been suggested we go to the senior center and hand out paper copies and collect them. And we may do that in the spring. Right now, we're a little pressed for time. But there may be more targeted effort. Once we have this and it's out, and people can see a whole book rather than half a book at a time, maybe that, we can do another publicity program to, again, say, "It's all here, it's on the website, you can look at it. Now give us your thoughts," and maybe do a second one after we've gotten the first one underway.
Well, and you have a lot of older residents who don't have a computer, don't want a computer, and so they're going to have to have something on paper that they can...
Well, and that, those are, in our information age right now, that's the transitional challenge.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, it really is.
Well, anything else I can do for you this evening? Thank you for your time. I didn't mean to keep you this long, but I really appreciate the input you've given us. And we will see you again soon.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, seeing no one's here from the public, we'll go ahead and skip public comment and move to adjournment. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.